Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley.
Here.
And Festerson is absent.
If you could also stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for opening remarks by Councilmember Johnson.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, united in the universal liberty and justice of all.
Have a seat, everyone. As everyone can tell, it's like summer is over and we're launching into winter. So with that being said, I have some unsettling news to share with everyone. On Monday at 37th and Grand Avenue, about 4:46 a.m., we had a fire. So the fire department was called to get rid of the fire. No one died. However, the fire was being used, or the house was being used, as a place to provide shelter to the homeless. And I'm not sure that everyone is aware of the impact that the homeless have in our city right now. The homeless is really making their headway during summer months. They were in various places throughout the city of Omaha. And the city provided them with tents so that they could stay outside. And now, winter is here, so the tents won't work anymore. And so now they're going inside the homes, vacant homes throughout the city of Omaha, to provide themselves with shelter, just as anyone would do. So at this time, I would just like to remind our residents, whether you own property or rent property, that you may want to look for insurance. Make sure that your insurance is up to date. Even if you're a renter, make sure your rental insurance is up to date, because this is not going to get any better, because the homeless is still looking for shelter. And so your house may very well be something that may be a result of that situation. So let's make sure that we do a call to action and make sure that our rental, as well as our homeowner insurance is up to date, just in case you are a victim to this. But, out with the old, in with the new. So we got the bad news out the way. Let's talk about good things. There are some announcements that's happening in the area as well that are great. The Sienna Francis House is in the process of having a ribbon cutting this coming week to announce the 50-unit tiny affordable house. So we will have 50 new homes, small homes, in the area. Also, in North Omaha, the Riverfront just recently closed its grounds. It's a centralized gathering place for locals and a space where visitors can feel like a local too. This public park serves as a gateway between the historic Old Market and North Omaha, while providing a scenic pathway down to the Missouri River. Already, the Riverfront has spurred additional transformation in North Omaha with new restaurants and retail space popping up in the surrounding areas, increasing vibrancy of the city's core. While modern realization has been a primary goal of the redesign, the Riverfront also honors the area's past by preserving beloved structures, protecting stored buildings, and rehabilitating aging fixtures. Between flourishing native landscaping, robust public art, and recreational diversity, the Riverfront has something for everyone. We also have $1.1 million federal grant that was given to resurrect the long-neglected North Omaha Park, also affectionately known as the Maya Park, with a $25 million affordable housing development rising nearby. Blue Stem Prairie Housing Development can be seen in the background for this effort. Maya Park near 52nd and Saorson Parkway is to expand and be revived with a new amphitheater, picnic pavilions, walking and cycling trails, and courts for sports, including pickleball and basketball. Featuring a barrier-free design, it is to support families already living in the area, as well as the new 85-home project. Construction is now complete, and we are now looking forward to moving into the phase of revitalizing North 24th Street as on this past Saturday, the Shirley Tyree Center, also Black Box, opened up. And we're looking forward to that venue, which is to support 90 people at a time. So that's really, really, really amazing news that's happening in North Omaha. And we are so proud and so happy about that. And we're looking forward to many, many, many more opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson. Good afternoon to everyone attending our meeting today. A special welcome to any of those who are visiting our city and are joining our city council for the first time. Welcome to the City of Omaha and our Omaha City Council meeting. I hope you'll enjoy our meeting today. As a courtesy to those, though, in attendance, I do ask that all of you turn off your cellphones or at least put them on vibrate so that they don't ring or go off. Madam Clerk?
An affidavit of publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the meeting act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
All right. Before we get started, we have a couple proclamations. We will start with the first one, Stand With Israel, and I think Councilmember Harding will be presenting.
Thank you, Madam President. Whereas Israel was brutally attacked on October 7th by Hamas terrorists, killing, wounding, and kidnapping hundreds of innocent Israelis and civilians from around the world, including Americans, and whereas the terrorist attacks have persisted, including making threats against their hostages, and whereas these outrageous acts are without justification and legitimacy and are universally condemned, and whereas Israel has no choice but to defend itself against terrorist aggression, risking the long-term stability of the region, and whereas Hamas's attacks also jeopardize the legitimate goals of peace and a secure future for the Middle East and the world, and whereas our prayers are with those precious souls of the children, women, and elderly so savagely attacked and taken from this world, and those still being held as hostages, and whereas we stand with Israel. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Omaha unequivocally condemns the Hamas terrorist attacks and stands with Israel in the face of this aggression. In witness whereof, we have set our hands and caused the official seal of the City of Omaha to be affixed on the 17th day of October 2023.
Thank you, Councilmember Harding. I think all of us pray for those in Israel and the family members of the missing and those who have been taken. Thank you for that. I think we have a second proclamation. Councilmember Bagley, Construction Inclusion Week.
Thanks, Madam President. Whereas we recognize that diversity is one of our greatest strengths, and it enriches a fabric of our society fostering creativity, innovation, and progress. And whereas equity is a foundation of a just and fair society, ensuring that every individual has the opportunity to reach their full potential, regardless of their background or circumstances. And whereas inclusion is a practice of embracing and valuing the differences that make each of us unique, fostering a sense of belonging and unity in our communities. And whereas an effort to harness the collective power of general contractors, specialty contractors, subcontractors, and suppliers to foster a more inclusive industry in its third year, and whereas the diversity and inclusion efforts benefit Omaha through increased talent attraction and retention, positively benefiting companies across all business sectors. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Omaha, do hereby proclaim the week of October 15th through October 21st, 2023, as Construction Inclusion Week. In witness whereof, we have set our hands and caused the official seal of the City of Omaha to be affixed on this 17th day of October 2023.
Christian, do you guys want to have a couple words?
Thank you. I'm Quinn Texmo, Community and Citizenship Manager for Turner Construction. Councilmember Bagley, we thank you for the proclamation. Now in its third year, Construction Inclusion Week is continuing to set and grow roots within our industry. Our focus is to create and maintain a culture that is both physically and emotionally safe, respectful, and inclusive for all. Turner trusts that if we communicate, model, train, and implement consistent high standards across the board for what is acceptable and what is unacceptable for all work sites, we will ensure that every worker is treated with respect and with dignity. Together with industry partners, clients, competitors, city leaders, we can create lasting change, and we can do that in our industry and help lift up the quality of the people who work in the construction industry and their work experience. Additionally, it has become apparent that in order to attract and retain top talent, we need to embrace inclusive ideas such as this. But this effort can't be contained to just a few firms. We need to see this concept adopted all throughout the construction industry, and that's where we need your help. As business leaders, as city leaders, and as members of the community, our ask is that you encourage anyone, any industry, any company that you come across within the construction industry, encourage them and ask them, what is it that they are doing to make our industry more fair, just, and equitable? We continue to work to create environments where every single person can be their best, authentic, and be treated with dignity and respect. And friends, this is the most important work that we will ever do in our lifetime. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Madam Clerk, liquor?
Item six, to consider a Class D liquor license for Heirloom Fine Foods located at 1229 Millwork Avenue, Suite 1210, is communication from the Planning Department regarding permits.
The public hearing on Agenda Item Number Six is today. Are there any proponents?
No.
Well, I call for proponents first on the liquor license. Are you here for Heirloom Fine Foods?
Correct, yes.
Okay, you are a proponent.
Okay.
If you want it, then you're a proponent.
Then I'm a proponent, yes.
If you could just state your name and address for the record?
Anthony Rosa, my business address?
Sure.
1210 Nicholas Street, 68102.
All right, thank you. And are you here just to answer any questions?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. You're off the hot seat now. Are there any other proponents?
No.
Are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Johnson?
Thank you. Hi there, how are you today?
Great, how are you doing?
Good. And your name again?
Anthony.
Anthony, thank you for coming today. Last week or two weeks ago, the last time we had a city council meeting, you were on Zoom?
Correct.
And there was a lot of moving parts going on. And one of those things was whether or not you had complied or your organization had complied with paying taxes.
Correct.
Have we resolved that issue?
Yes, we have.
Okay. All right. Can you tell me or provide me with a snapshot of your business plan, what you do at this facility?
Correct. So it's the Millwork Commons area, the Ashton Building. Basically, I heard you mention the Riverfront and Sienna Francis House. We're right in between both of those. So we'll be adding jobs to that location. Basically, the liquor license I'm looking for is just a wine and beverage. The concept I'm working with is a marketing cafe. Pretty much any large city you've ever been to has a marketing cafe that kind of services that area. That's kind of what my focus is on, is focusing on that area, all the buildings that are going up in that area, and Creighton College and Old Market, pretty much.
So will your location be in the Ashton Building?
Yes, it will be.
And in relation to Clean Slate, where would you be located?
It'd be the opposite end of Clean Slate, so you would basically find us across from Sweet Magnolia.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Cool, all right. So what is your hours of operation?
That I'm still kind of working with. I'm kind of noticing that some of the area, I've kind of changed their hours a little bit from like 7:00 to 5:00, from 7:00 to 7:00. So I'm kind of playing with those hours, but I'm looking at 7:00 to 7:00 correctly right now.
Okay, and have you done any outreach in the area in terms of letting the neighborhood know what your intentions are today?
Owners of the Black Dog and Ellie Pointer are also clients of ours. We actually do a lot of work inside the building as far as catering. So we're pretty well-known in the area, as well as Mastercraft and that whole area.
Okay. All right, well, I usually frequent that area quite regularly, so I look forward to stopping in and seeing what you can offer.
We're looking forward to seeing you.
All right, I'm in full support of this license. I move to accept the recommendation of the liquor license.
Subject to permits?
Subject to permits.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Harding, Hug, Johnson, Rowe, Bagley, Melton?
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you very much. Know where to find me.
Item seven, to consider a Class D liquor license for Two Familia Mexican Restaurant located at 5402 North 90th Street, is communication from the applicant to amend to a Class I liquor license.
The public hearing on Agenda Item Number Seven is today. Are there any proponents? If you could come up to the podium there? Hi.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. If you could please just state your name and address for the record, please?
Jose Gonzalez, 5402 North 90th Street, Omaha.
Thank you. And are you here just to answer any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none. Are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Councilman Harding?
Thank you, Madam President. And so you want to change this, you want to amend it to a Class I?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to amend to a Class I liquor license for this location.
Second. Roll call.
Harding?
Yes.
Hug?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Bagley?
Aye.
Melton?
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Yep. Second.
Harding?
Yes.
Hug?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Bagley?
Aye.
Melton?
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight, to consider a Class D liquor license for Q Street Convenience Store located at 13205 Q Street. The applicant has also requested to withdraw this application.
Is there a motion? Roll call.
Harding?
Yes.
Hug?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Bagley?
Aye.
Melton?
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Item nine, to consider a Class K catering liquor license for Sips on 10th located at 1022 South 10th Street.
And I believe we have our applicant on Zoom, so the public hearing on Agenda Number Nine is today. And proponents, please?
Yes, good afternoon, members of the city council. My name is Jaclyn Oltmans, 541 South 52nd Street.
Thank you. And are you here to answer any questions?
I'm here to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any other proponents here today? Seeing none. Are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Oh. Councilman Bagley?
Thanks, Madam President. Jaclyn, can you hear me?
I can.
Good afternoon. Hey, so thanks for coming back. I know you guys opened up here within the last year. And I had a check with our clerk. When I read this on Thursday, K is for catering, correct?
Yes.
I got to keep up on my licenses, and I wrote that down, so I don't want to cheat and say K stands for catering. That's close enough that I'll remember it, but I know you guys have done a lot of nice work down there. And I noticed on the north end, it's a nice, it looks like a putt-putt golf course on the north end of your building there. Where are you going to go, where are you going to hold the catering at, inside and outside?
Yeah, yeah. You know, we've had a lot of requests for our services, off-site, inside, outside. I'd really like to increase the amount of SDLs that we can get down here and do a few more community events just in the neighborhood.
Okay, thanks for zooming in today, and I'm glad to make a motion to support this today and wish you the best of luck. Thanks, Madam President.
Thank you.
All right, roll call.
Harding?
Yes.
Hug?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Bagley?
Aye.
Melton?
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you.
Item 10, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Rainwood Park located east of 108th and McKinley Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on Agenda Item Number 10 is today. Are there any proponents? It'll just pop up there in a second.
Oh yeah, good afternoon, members of the council. Jeff Lake, 450 Regency Parkway, here on behalf of the applicant, Backcountry Holdings. Along with me is Kyle Haasi from E&amp;A Consulting Group, and Justin Rivera and Jim Hine from Lund Company Development Partners on this project. Just at a very high level, the location we're talking about here is I-680 and Blair High Road. And more specifically to the northwest of that, here's the location of the site, just east of Blair High Road, roughly McKinley Street. A blow-up of the area. With an aerial, a lot of other, is there a way to zoom this out?
Just on the top.
There we go. So a blow-up of activity of the area of industrial uses, the area outlined, and hatched is the Google facility that's under development and optioned on ground. Training facility in State Street, Blair High Road, so that's the rough location. The site plan of what we've got proposed is here. We have three smaller flex industrial lots on the front of the site along 108th Street, and three large warehousing-style lots, or about 14 acres on average, to the east of that. The project steps up from the low side of 108th up to the east side. A little more information on the site, we had a neighborhood meeting on August 22nd, because this is a rezoning, there's a accompanying rezoning that'll see it on the final plat. We had five participants join us via Zoom. We followed up with a couple other neighbors afterwards that couldn't meet us, meet with us, listen to a few concerns. Those ranged from sightlines on the east side to drainage on the north side, and all of items that I think we can work through and address with the neighbors. We did follow up with them again here when we had noticed that this was going to be on city council to answer any questions they might have. Haven't heard anything yet from them, but we will continue to communicate with the neighbors and work through any issues they might have. With that, I'd answer any questions you might have of me.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none. Are there any opponents? Seeing none. Councilwoman Johnson, you're recognized.
Hi there, how are you? Can you come back up? This has nothing to do with the preliminary plat. Just asking questions for point of information. About how many jobs will be, will we incur here at this location?
Jeff Lake, 450 Regency Parkway. You know, that's tough to tell. Our role right now at this stage is horizontal development. So we are working through the entitlements and zoning and creating those parcels that will allow for spaces for construction jobs, for ultimate, you know, industrial-type warehousing jobs. I think that's a great question that I can follow up and get you some more specific answers for the next time, but I have not gotten that deep into the analysis.
Okay.
But...
Thank you for being straightforward.
Yeah, absolutely.
Appreciate that.
And we are excited about the location. A lot of the industrial that's come online has been further southwest in kind of southwest part of the metro, and this gives another location for jobs and industry, kind of in the north-central part of the city. So we're excited about that.
Excited to have you here.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the public hearing is closed. I see no further lights. Is there a motion? Roll call.
Harding?
Yes.
Hug?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Bagley?
Aye.
Melton?
Yes.
Item 10 is approved, six to zero.
Item 11, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Bennington Cottages, along with a waiver to Section 5399 sidewalks located northwest of 72nd Street and Bennington Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on Agenda Item Number 11 is today. Are there any proponents?
Doug Kelner, 10836 Old Mill Road, here on behalf of the applicant. May I answer any questions that you have?
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none. Are there any opponents? Seeing, yep.
Louis C. Menace, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I'm opposed to this because you have securitability over this area. And I normally and often do not agree with limiting pedestrian pathways. So, you know, if the developer wants to make a statement in a public space as to why he feels that the sidewalks need to be limited or not developed, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Seeing none. Close the public hearing. Would you like to respond to that comment?
Yeah. We actually are putting in sidewalks. We're just not doing them in the traditional sense where they're in the right-ofways, they're running more through the backs of the yards and things to make it, it's more of a community feel throughout the subdivision, so that's our sidewalk waiver, I guess.
Okay, so you're putting sidewalks on the back instead of the front?
Right.
Okay. More people gather, I think, in the...
That's the idea.
Backyard. I got it. All right. Thank you for clarifying that. We appreciate that. I see no further lights. Is there a motion? Second. Roll call.
Harding?
Yes.
Hug?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Bagley?
Aye.
Melton?
Yes.
Item 11 is approved, six to zero.
Items 12 and 13 can be considered together for Lakeside Farms located northwest of 72nd Street and Bennington Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 12, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 13, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
And the public hearings on Agenda Items 12 and 13 are today. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Madam President. Councilmembers Jim Bouger, 10250 Regency Circle, here on behalf of the applicant. Be happy to answer any questions on the project if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none. Are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Roll call.
Harding?
Yes.
Hug?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Bagley?
Aye.
Melton?
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you.
Items 14 through 21 can be considered together for a southside terrace one located northeast of 29th and W Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 14, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the NCE overlay district to incorporate this property into that district. Item 15- Item 15, an ordinance to approve an amendment to the future land use element of the city's master plan. Item 16, an ordinance to approve the transformation plan. Item 17, a resolution to approve the redevelopment plan. Items 18 and 19, resolutions to approve the preliminary and final plats. Item 20, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement. Item 21, a resolution to approve the tax increment financing redevelopment project plan in an amount up to $1,724,214.
Thank you. The public hearing on Agenda items 14 through 21 will be held together and are being held today. We will, though, vote separately on 14 through 20, and 21 will be a separate vote. So are there any proponents?
Hello, Kelly Johnston Dorsey with the Omaha Planning Department. Since we have several agenda items to cover, I'm going to start with a short presentation on number 16 as it offers background and context on the other items. So in 2019, the City of Omaha and Omaha Housing Authority received a $1.3 million Choice Neighborhoods Planning and Action Grant from HUD. A transformation plan is intended to serve as the guiding document for the revitalization of public housing units while simultaneously directing the transformation of the surrounding neighborhood and positive outcomes for families. There are three main pillars with our Choice Neighborhood Program. The first is people, and that's to improve outcomes of households related to education, employment, and income and health. Housing, which is to replace distressed public housing with high-quality mixed-income housing that is well-managed and responsive to the needs of surrounding neighborhood and within the neighborhood to create the conditions necessary for public and private reinvestment to offer the kinds of amenities and assets that are important to families' choices about their community. The general boundaries of the area are L Street under the north, Upland Park to the south, 27th Street to the east, and 36th Street to the west. Southside Terrace itself is a series of 51 nearly identical buildings with 358 units. Southside Terrace opened in 1940 with 55 buildings and 522 units. Over the years, several units have been combined to accommodate larger families. Throughout our planning process, residents were the core and central point of our engagement. We had a steering committee with the city, OHA, so Omaha Housing Authority, Canopy South. Key partners were Brinshaw Development, LRK, and Lampar Nielsen. We also had an engagement team to make sure we're engaging the residents thoughtfully. And we had a stakeholder committee, focus groups, and resident small groups that were in native languages. We hosted 14 resident and community meetings. The first was a kickoff meeting that was attended by over 500 people, but we did a lot more than meetings. To highlight a few of these, we've been door-to-door at every Southside Terrace unit to conduct a housing survey. We hosted pop-up events across the street from the elementary school as kids were getting out of school to get their feedback. We mailed to every single resident in the neighborhood a neighborhood survey. But these words and these titles only mean so much, and now becomes the anxious part of the presentation where I see if this video's gonna work. So that was a summary or a highlight video of just one of our mini-events. We were lucky to partner with a neighborhood community anchor, The Simple Foundation, and let us tag along on some other events, and this was one of them. So with all of that feedback and analysis that was conducted, we created a series of goals for the transformation plan. I'm not going to go into each one of these, because, trust me, we could all go on for days about this plan. It's been a four-year process. We created goals under people. Created a separate series of housing goals and neighborhood goals as well. Again, those three core components of our transformation plan. Now we're going into implementation. So how to prove this plan that hopefully you will approve today in March of 2020, and March 23rd of 2022, and our implementation grant was awarded September 15th. Our implementation end date for that grant is September 30th of 2028. So this transformation plan, which is item number 16 on the agenda, really sets the framework and outline for everything we're moving forward with, with our $50 million implementation grant. And those are some of the other agenda items today. So speaking on those, regarding item number 17, it is an appendix that was added to the transformation plan to incorporate the items required by state law that were already not in the transformation plan, so it could qualify as a redevelopment plan under state law. So that's Agenda item number 17. Regarding item number 15, when we were working on the transformation redevelopment plan, the city's existing land use map was analyzed and a new future land use map was created. The purpose of this agenda item is to ensure that the city's master plan and the transformation plan and redevelopment plan are consistent with each other. With item number 14 on the agenda. Consistent with, again, our other agenda items, this is a new zoning overlay for Southside Terrace and the three sites within the neighborhood where new housing development is anticipated. The NCE adjusts the underlying zoning requirement to better fit within the context of the neighborhood and incorporate feedback we've heard from residents over the last four years. The NCE sets a standard for the planned redevelopment around sidewalks, setbacks, transparency, materials, articulation, entrances, parking, among many other items. Items number 18 through 20, well, through 21, are specific to the first phase of housing redevelopment. Southside Terrace Phase 1. So this housing phase is on the southeastern portion of Southside Terrace. Demolition of two buildings will begin early next year, as will the construction of a new 92-unit mixed-income building. The 13 households who live within these two buildings are receiving relocation assistance right now. Here is a site plan and an image of what that first phase is going to look like. And we're really excited to take the transformation plan that we've worked on for so long, setting this groundwork, now to where we're seeing very, in the next couple of months, demolition and new construction starting. So I'm here to answer any questions you may have, and then I'll turn it over to our partners.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Thank you, Kelly. Good afternoon. Joni Pore with the Omaha Housing Authority, 1823 Carney Street. Going to send this over here so it can come around. I won't repeat any of the wonderful things that Kelly shared with you about this amazing development, this opportunity that's coming forward to all of us. I did want to share that, obviously, as Kelly talked about, a huge component of this redevelopment is the demolition relocation of the 358 households at Southside Terrace. One of the questions, I believe, that came up during pre-council was with regard to the Spencer Homes replacement and the relocation at that location on the North 30th Street revitalization plan that's already been in place and is a couple of years ahead of this Choice Neighborhoods grant. And so I did want to just provide some information ahead of any questions that you might have. And of course, I'll be available to answer any questions as well. But Spencer Homes started with 111 units. Out of those 111 units, the Omaha Housing Authority, along with CVR, are contracted relocation experts who focused on all of the things that are guaranteed to tenants under the Uniform Relocation Act, as well as that are guaranteed to them by choice grant, which is the right to return. We relocated 91 households. Some of those households left the project before relocation. Some of them did not successfully relocate. But 91 out of 111 were relocated. Currently, we have 75 of those 91 households that are engaging with our case management team and with our relocation teams. Really, for this housing development on the North 30th Street side, Spencer Homes, Nobility Point is the only housing that's been brought online. So Nobility Point is our senior-focused housing. So only individuals who are seniors in the entire household are allowed to live there. So we have what's considered to be replacement units, 18 replacement units at Nobility Point. Of those, I believe we had seven households at Spencer Homes that would fit that criteria. Five of the seven chose to move to Nobility Point when they were given that opportunity. So the vast majority of those senior households moved to Nobility Point. Just now coming online, I believe I just received the contract today to sign for the other replacement units, those next 39 replacement units for the Overlook and Burdette and Wade. Like I said, just now coming online, and we have 16 households that are going to be returning and coming back onsite. So out of the current phases that have been put into service, we have total replacement units of 57, so about half of the total replacement units that are planned. Total replacement planned units are about 122. And 21 of those 57 units have been occupied by former Spencer tenants. I'm not going to read the rest of the statistics that are there for you. That's future development. And how many are going to be coming online that I wanted to provide to you. But we absolutely are reaching out to every single household that's been relocated, offering them the right to return, offering relocation assistance. Some of those households have indicated to us, you know what, I'm great. I'm really wonderful where I am, and I don't want to move. And then some of them, we have not yet had a housing opportunity that fits their needs. We have a couple of really large households that we've relocated that need housing, and those units have not been built yet. We have, I think, five and six-bedroom units in the phase that's currently under construction at Kennedy Square East, so we have not made offers to those families yet. So again, some of those households are saying, I'm really good. I don't need, I don't want to come back. And some of them have not received an offer. But out of those that have, we've had those 21 that have come back, and then 75 total that we continue to engage with. I'll be happy to answer any questions, but obviously, we're very much in support of what's in front of you today, these eight items in front of you today to keep moving this amazing transformation with Southside Terrace and Indian Hill forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other proponents?
Good afternoon, Cesar Garcia, 2411 Old Street. The Executive Director of Canopy South, an organization, a nonprofit, working on the revitalization of neighborhoods in South Omaha. I want to make a couple points here. It's been two years that we've been working, more than two years, almost three and a half years, working on this plan. This community has been waiting for this for 40 years. They've been promised for the last 20 years that there will be a relocation and demolition. And I'm glad that there is a team now behind this, doing all the efforts necessary to make this happen. When we talk about transformation, it's important to make clear that transformation not only happens in the physical space. This has transformed the lives of thousands of families that live there right now and in the future. The transformation plan included a team from workforce to healthcare to education, and that's what Canopy South is doing right now, which is in the education lead in the whole transformation plan. So, thank you. This is the first step from everything that we have planned to this point, now to get things into action. So I appreciate all the efforts today.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Hi. Hello. Bill Lucash, Brinshaw Development, 903 South 184th Avenue Circle. It's a pleasure to be here, as always. Thank you for your time. You know, everyone before me has covered a lot of this development, but I just wanted to hit on a few points if that would be okay with you. Let me put up this rendering real quick. Oh, this is a new, no? There we go. Thank you so much. I was confused by the technology. I appreciate that. This is, of course, Southside Terrace Phase 1, a rendering that we have of it. And I just wanted to touch on Southside Terrace a little bit upfront. The City Council's approval of items 14 to 21 on today's agenda supports the redevelopment of Southside Terrace Garden Apartments. This redevelopment effort is a once-in-a-century effort, quite frankly. It will create, Phase 1 itself, or excuse me, the entire development will create over 700 mixed-income housing units to support Omaha's growing population and to help close the ever-expanding housing need gap. So I think, and our team thinks, it is a very important project for our community. There will be replacement units for Southside Terrace residents. There will be affordable housing to support households earning 60% AMI or less. There will be affordable market-rate units open to anyone. And this work supports the City of Omaha Master Plan, the Housing Affordability Action Plan, the Consolidated Plan, and, when passed, the Southside Terrace Indian Hill Transformation Plan. The NCE zoning overlay is an important tool for this redevelopment effort. It is important to support new development and to respect the characteristics and context of the existing neighborhood. The NCE zoning overlay helps us achieve both, and I appreciate the Planning Department's effort to prepare this. So thank you so much for that. Regarding item 21, mixed-income development, and affordable housing development in general, needs to tap into every funding source that it can. This development has eight funding sources blended in together. It's very complex. It's challenging, but it's necessary to make these work. TIF is an important part of the mix, absolutely. As you might expect, based on where this development is located, we need funding to improve the existing infrastructure. I think since the time of application, we found out that we need to do even more infrastructure work for 29th Street. That's fine. That's part of the process, but these funds are greatly needed for those types of things. Also, you know, this site has been developed since probably the late 1800s. There's challenges with the soil. And at this site, you know, we need to study, excavate those soils, and provide a more robust foundation to account for those soil conditions. TIF helps with those types of costs. TIF is really an essential tool for this development, and frankly, I'm not sure how it would all come together without TIF funds. You know, this is a property that will now be on the tax roll. And the goal of the Choice Neighborhood Program is to involve people that are living in that area, not only in the housing, but also from the participation in the development of the site. And I think that's a goal that TIF would share as well. We approximate, that there's going to be approximately 35 jobs as a result of Southside Terrace Phase 1, sustained or created in construction. And that's about $1.5 million of salary. We are going to have an outreach, contractor outreach event in early November to attract MBEs, WBEs, Section 3 businesses, and SEBs, trying to get them in contact with the general contractor, so they have an opportunity to participate in this development. And we will have more contractor outreach events in the future to, for other phases, to make sure that we are working on that. Rents, of course. Generally speaking, one bedroom is $800 a month. A five-bedroom might be $1,800. You know, we did a market study for this development, and the market study, we said we could charge up to $1,100 for a one-bedroom or $2,475 for a five-bedroom. We're not doing that. That's not what that project is about. This is about affordable housing. It's about mixed-income development, so that we're not concentrating poverty, that we're giving an economic opportunity to the neighborhood and to the people that live in that neighborhood. So thank you so much for your consideration. And that's all I have right now. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Good afternoon. Don Seaton, City Planning. Just to speak on the TIF aspect, this is a tremendously ambitious project, four or five phases. So we'll be back in front of you for more with the other phases. The total project investment is about $34.8 million. The TIF request is $1,724,214. This meets the required TIF criteria. We ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none. Are there any opponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. An excellent sales pitch, but before the citizens sign this, I think they should ask a few questions. And that's what I'm going to maybe bring up. I remember years and years and years ago, when my sister-in-law and her young son lived in Southside Terrace. I believe it was subsidized housing at the time. Now, I don't know whether the city sold it off and somebody owned it all during that time, and it ran down, deteriorated all during that time, or are you still on it? I think that needs to be explained when they come back to counter me. Who owned all that? And why are they getting TIF now if the city owns it? Why does the city own, why does the city need TIF on this if we own it anyway? Housing, urban development, grants, someday those grants will go away. I'd also like to know who pays the expense of moving people out and back in. And I'm opposed to the references to, availed references to one shared community, large community, and my voice matters. Your flip chart says your voice matters. Your flip chart says your voice matters. So there should be some other proponents up here asking these questions. Or it should be more explained by you people before you sign the deal, because actually, you work for us. Just some of the key words picked up. One-stop community, maybe? Consistent with a master plan and a development plan, affordable housing, that comes up everywhere else. Is there going to be affordable housing for retirees because of the property taxes they can't afford? Temporarily jobs, the jobs this creates won't be for life. When a job's done, that job is gone. So that's not a terribly good benefit for paying it off. I guess the taxpayers will do that. Possibly some of these things get into violating state law, equal treatment under the law, even the Constitution. State law is written pretty broadly in terms of development, and they keep changing the interpretation. Depends on who's interpreting it. Fifteen years, ten years, twenty-five years? Now it applies to a city. But somebody pays taxes to pay for that. Neighborhood communities, your voice matters, affordable housing. Oh my gosh, on one block south of Dodge Street, and a little ways west of Saddle Creek, I believe it was Harney Street, there was ten nice little houses demolished to make a parking lot for a community partner. But I think probably something else will be going up there too, like a big apartment place. And of course, the remodeling of the veterinary clinic, which we don't need to do.
Larry, let's stick to this project.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Because you didn't recognize me earlier, I want to submit this for the record. I'd like to see it printed rather than just said that I spoke. Violation of the Open Meetings Act.
It was a proclamation, Larry. We don't have proponents and opponents on that. Anything further?
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents, or, I'm sorry, opponents?
Excuse me. Luis Jimenez, twenty-seven oh nine Dewey Avenue. I appreciate some aspects of, actually, most of this project. The fact that there was extensive community engagement, so that the final product matches what the community wants, which I don't think all your projects go through that process. And then the units, they look good. I did hear something, though, that it's something that you guys have to decide on, whether you want to keep going with it, or you've already made your mind on it, which is what is affordable housing. The proponent said that the one-bedroom unit was eight hundred dollars for one unit. So if you could put up my calculator on the screen. So let's take eight hundred dollars and divide that by thirty percent, which would be point three. You'd have to be making two thousand seven hundred for you to pay a thirty percent of your pay to go to rent. Now, they say that one week's worth of pay should go to your rent. That's the ideal. So then, let's take eight hundred dollars, divide that by twenty-five percent, which is three thousand two hundred. Well, let me try that again. Eight hundred, divide that by thirty percent, it is twenty-seven hundred, eight hundred dollars, divide that by twenty-five percent. So for that, it's three thousand two hundred dollars. And so that's a month. Take that by twelve. The annual pay is thirty-eight hundred dollars. These units for a one-bedroom could be affordable. Maybe if two people lived in a one-bedroom, then that would definitely be affordable. And then you have other units, you know, two-bedroom, five-bedroom. The cost goes up once you add more bedrooms. Is that affordable? Is eight hundred dollars on a unit, a monthly rent, is that affordable? I don't think so. Not for everybody. So I, this is one of the things that makes me believe that you, as a city, are developing for a community that you want. Like, people are going to move in, they're the ones that are going to be able to afford these units. I try to keep my rent lower than eight hundred dollars, because I can afford that. I tried seven hundred a month, and then my rent just went up from there. And then with the CAM expenses, it became closer to nine hundred dollars. That's not affordable to me as for a one-bedroom. So, on that point, you know, I just want to offer information that I don't think eight hundred dollars is a week of pay for a lot of people in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Saying none, public hearings closed. Councilwoman Johnson.
You're recognized.
Thank you. Kelly, if you could come up to the mic, please. First, I'd like to thank you for doing an amazing job at providing the information in terms of public outreach to the community, something that I've been advocating for since I've been on city council. And also, the presentation, the slide, it was well-thought-out and did provide us with the information that we needed in terms of what those outcomes of the outreach was. So I just wanted to commend you on those efforts. Looking forward to seeing future developments such as this continue, as you did a great job at providing that example. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joni, if you wouldn't mind coming to the mic. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, how are you?
I'm doing well, Councilwoman Johnson. How are you?
Good.
Good.
I recognize that you were not in our pre-council meeting
Yes, ma'am.
earlier today. Just want to point out the information that we had a little discrepancy on. Appreciate you providing the Spencer Home Relocation information, but the confusion that we had during city council, our pre-council, was the reference of relocation principles that were applied for Seventy-Five North, or likened to what was applied to Spencer, which they were not.
Okay.
So I wanted to point that out
Wonderful.
because that was not so. We learned from Seventy-Five North. We learned the lessons, and then we executed down the road.
Great. That's wonderful. I hope the information provided is still helpful, so that you all know, moving forward, that relocation for a family that didn't choose that is hard, and it's a priority for us to make sure that, as best as possible, we do that smoothly and with respect.
Okay. And then there was a question that was about cost of moving.
Yes.
Who incurred that cost?
Sure. So part of the grant that we received from Housing and Urban Development for both the North Thirty-first Street revitalization, as well as Southside Terrace Indian Hill, part of a line item in that is related to housing counseling. So just talking to the family about their relocation options, presenting them with relocation options, and then actual cost for relocation. And if that involves two moves for someone, because we have to relocate them and then move them back, then that cost is a part of that grant.
So I'm correct in saying that the tenant did not pay for the move?
Absolutely not. The tenants are not responsible for incurring relocation costs, especially because, again, this is not a relocation that they initiated.
Thank you so much for all of those considerations. And then I would like to comment with Brinshaw for their efforts in this project.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
I'd like to thank you for your outreach with contractors to ensure that when we talk about economic developments such as this, that it did not just encompass, it didn't encompass just the residents, but it took care of that community from a holistic standpoint, which would also incorporate contractors. In order for underserved communities to prosper and grow well into the future, we have to start thinking outside the box and including contractors in this concept, because oftentimes, they're in that area. To put a nice development project like this in this area and not give individuals the tools and the income to ensure thriving community means absolutely nothing. So I wanted to thank Brinshaw for their efforts in recognizing that and being forward in their thinking in terms of what that community, the potential of that community going forward would look like.
Thank you so much, and agree completely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hug, you're recognized.
This is in my district. This is District Four. When you talk about District Four, you are primarily talking about South Omaha. In the short history of South Omaha, there has been several monumental turning points that, for the most part, went unnoticed. When they laid the first brick for the first packing house, they come out of the ground in South Omaha. The next turning point would have been when they bulldozed the last packing house, the Wilson Packing Plant, the last packing house from that era, and they bulldozed that. This project is more monumental to what South Omaha will look like in the years ahead than those two events combined. And those two events defined what South Omaha was. This event, the construction of this project, and all the hard work you guys have went into, is going to be a monumental shift in how the rest of the city looks at South Omaha, and how South Omaha will look in the future. So, thank you for your hard work. I look forward to seeing it come out of the ground. It's going to be bittersweet, because a lot of people spent their lives, grew up in those buildings, lived and died in those buildings, and it's going to be bittersweet for a lot of people to see those disappear. But I think the reward will be when they see the project finalized, and how that's going to make South Omaha look. So thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Councilman Hug? Are you done?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just wanted, I didn't want to cut you off, in case you had more. Councilman Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you. Kelly, if you could come up. I know there may be a couple things that were said in the comments after you were up there, so I just wanted to give you an opportunity to either address those, or clarify, or expand on any of those.
Some of the questions I've received.
Yeah, yeah.
So just to clarify, the City of Omaha does not own Southside Terrace.
Right.
Nor have we owned Southside Terrace. That's owned by the Omaha Housing Authority. Moving forward, it will be owned by a partnership between Brinshaw Development, Omaha Housing Authority, and Canopy South, confirming that with the team.
Yeah.
So that is why they're eligible for TIF. The city does not own it, has never owned it. Joni answered the question about who pays for the expense of people moving in and out. There are two line items specifically in our grant for those purposes. And there will be housing specific for seniors. So there was a question about if retirees will live in there. We will have a housing phase that is specific to senior housing. Like we did with Nobility Point up north, there will be a housing phase specific to seniors. It's actually within the neighborhood. It's not on Southside Terrace proper, but it is a housing phase that will be dedicated for seniors. So yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanted to make sure we had that on.
Yes.
Thanks. The only other thing I had was, I know there was some math being done there. Actually, the thirty percent, the ninety-six hundred dollars would be the annual rent at eight hundred dollars a month, and then that would be thirty percent of thirty-two thousand dollars for the, if you use that rule of thumb for your housing expense.
Thank you for that. No further lights? Is there a motion? Roll call.
Just to clarify, this is for-
Oh, and this is, sorry, and sorry for your, the motion, that would be for fourteen through twenty. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
And roll call on, do we have a motion on item, agenda item twenty-one? Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you very much.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearing on agenda items twenty-two through twenty-eight was held on October third of two thousand and twenty-three. Do we have a motion? Second. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Oh, I read. I'm sorry, I thought it was yours. Sorry, I'm still, I'm still making, making sure I know what my role is here. So, the public hearings on agenda items twenty-nine through forty-six are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. Previously, we have been asked to remove agenda items thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, and forty-two. So the public hearing on agenda items for right now is twenty-nine through thirty-six, and forty-three through forty-six. So if you're a proponent on those items, please come to the microphone. Proponent?
Todd Titsley, two oh two seven six Works Street, Elkhorn, Nebraska, Fraternal Order of Eagles. And I guess my question is, is it necessary for me to be up here?
Okay. And this is on agenda item twenty-nine for the liquor license.
Yeah. I am not Jason. I'm a club secretary at the Eagles, representing the company, or the organization.
Well, we appreciate you coming down here. We don't require your presence on consent agenda items when, I believe this is, this is just a permission to appoint Jason as manager.
Then I go to email I got saying, you are a representative, are required to attend this meeting.
Oh, our clerk just informed me that they, they want for all liquor licenses to attend.
Oh, okay.
So we appreciate you coming down here.
All right.
And you're a representative of the Elkhorn Frat Order thirty-nine, forty-three.
Yes.
Okay. And you're here just to answer any questions?
Yes.
Well, we appreciate you. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents or opponents?
Dale Brandsburg, one four zero three Farnum Street. I'm here for eight oh one Chop House for the liquor license.
Thank you. And you're here to answer any questions?
Yes.
Thank you very much for coming down.
That's it.
I'm Kevin Ames. I'm here for Donna Millies, item number thirty-two, fifty-three ten South Eighty-fourth Street, Omaha. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you for coming down. And again, if you could just wait around in case any council members have any questions. Thank you. Are there any other proponents or opponents? This is your last chance for agenda items twenty-nine through thirty-six and forty-three through forty-six. Okay. Seeing none, public hearings closed, and Councilman Hug, you are recognized.
Just as a matter of housekeeping, I think I need to remove thirty-six so when we vote on it, I can abstain.
Thank you very much. So well, we just did public hearing on it, but we'll remove thirty-six for purposes of voting. Thank you. Anything else? Any other comments from council members? Roll call.
Harding. Hug. Johnson. Rowe. Bagley. Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Hearing on agenda item, we just held the hearing on agenda item thirty-six. And we've closed the public hearing, so is there a motion? Roll call.
Harding. Hug. Johnson. Rowe. Bagley. Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero. Hug abstains.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-seven is today. Are there any proponents?
Hello, my name is Crystal Wassner. I am with the Public Works Department. I'm the design engineer. I am a proponent for the project. Can also give a little bit of background on the project as well. This project is, well, let me first start with the actual project. So the project is on North Twenty-Ninth Street from Hamilton to Seward Street. The project is part of our street preservation program for our low-income areas, otherwise known as our Five B program. Our Five B programs are one hundred percent city-funded, so no assessments will be charged to the adjacent property owners. The initial request for the improvement came to Public Works from an adjacent property owner on September ninth of 2020. The council approved the design for this roadway project on January twenty-fourth of 2023. We're currently in the preliminary design phase of the project. We've looked at multiple alternatives for this design. We're trying to reduce the impacts to the adjacent property owners. During the alternatives review for the design, it was identified that we would need a variance for the design requirements from the Nebraska Board of Public Roads, Classifications, and Standards in order for us to be able to further our design. So the council request today is to recognize and allow us to bring this variance forward to the Nebraska Board for review and hopefully approval. So there's no costs associated with, with this approval. If we receive approval today and then we go on and receive approval from the Nebraska Board, then we can further our design process, which would include public engagement, the, the community, as well as the adjacent property owners. But if we are not allowed to bring this to the board or the board decides to not grant us the variance for this design, we'd have to start looking back at our alternatives and it could potentially cancel the project.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other proponents or opponents to agenda item thirty-seven? Seeing none, public hearings closed. I recognize Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you for providing that information to clear up any possible or potential misunderstanding in the community. Appreciate that. Motion to approve.
Second. Roll call.
Harding. Hug. Johnson.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Melton.
Yes.
Item thirty-seven is approved, six to zero.
Public hearing on agenda item thirty-eight is today. Are there any proponents or opponents?
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Steve Zivlin, City Planning Department, Lead Department. Actually, these, the next three items here are actual lead hazard control projects that are going through the lead program that I manage. This is a grant that's provided by the HUD that deals with assisting homeowners with lead-based paint hazards that are found in their homes. Primary objective or goal of this grant is to keep children safe from being lead poisoned, especially that population under the age of six, our most vulnerable population. These three items are owner-occupied homes that have applied for the, and gone through the criteria, met all our criteria, below eighty percent of area median income. We've conducted extensive inspections on the properties and identified all of the lead-based paint hazards with these properties. I am, the two of the properties actually do have children that have elevated blood lead levels. So it is important that, this is, actually just illustrates the importance of this program and to assist our citizens in our communities with lead-based paint problems. So I am here to answer any other questions that you may have.
Thank you. Anyone else that's a proponent or opponent for agenda item thirty-eight? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. I'll recognize Councilwoman Johnson.
Steve, I do have a few questions here. To what extent is lead-based paint a hazard in our community? And how does it affect public health and safety?
I would say we have serious problems still with lead-based paint, actually, for being the year 2023. There are eighty-four thousand homes built prior to nineteen seventy-eight in our area. And as you well know, most of our older housing stock is in eastern Omaha, primarily north and south Omaha and that midtown area. So we're still finding, unfortunately, we're still finding children with elevated blood lead levels. We work closely with the Douglas County Health Department. They have federal funding and with the state law that we have is when a child is identified with an elevated blood lead level, the Douglas County Health Department is then engaged, notified of that, and they begin case management of that case with that elevated blood level child. One of the things they do is then refer that home, that homeowner, to take care of that problem. They refer them to our program that we have. And so currently, in our current grant, we have about seventy-five percent of our applicants are through that Douglas County Health Department referral or connection. So I would say that we still have a problem. The other, you know, the two grants that I manage out of my, out of my office is the Soil Remediation Program, still two with the EPA, and the smelting plant that we have on the river here. We're still finding lead in yards, that, in yards that need to be sampled and yards that still need to be cleaned up. So, you know, unfortunately, we still do have, there still is problems with lead-based paint and lead in general in the soil.
Thank you. What are the expected outcomes and benefits of this improvement in the health and housing condition?
So the scope of what we'll be doing is a lot of, a lot of window component replacement or door component replacement. We'll do a lot of interior and exterior paint stabilization or repainting as well. So as, not only as aesthetically to the exterior or the neighborhood, you're also increasing the health inside that home as well, protecting those children. The other benefits that come along with that is the windows we're putting in are Energy Star rated windows. So we're recognizing that energy efficiency that we're also saving then with our home improvements, increasing the cost savings, utility savings to homeowners. And then just general, and of course, the main concern is remediating or abating those lead-based paint hazards permanently when we do that component replacement. So those are no longer an issue. I mean, our, our dollars, we can only make them go so far. So we try to get them, we stretch them as far as we can at the time that we assist the unit, you know. This is not a permanent fix, but at least it's a fix at the point in time and hopefully for four or five or six years while that child is in that vulnerable stage, while they're crawling around and do a lot of hand-to-mouth transmission and getting into those window seals and out in the soil and the yard and if a pet is tracking it in, that we can protect those kids.
Now, you, you mentioned that you've done some risk assessments, some remediation. What will you do in terms of follow-up monitoring on this, once you've done that?
So, once we assist the unit, we do have a three-year agreement with that homeowner that they actually will continue to do that maintenance or that monitoring of that. We provide education and awareness to that homeowner and so that they are equipped and have the knowledge that they can continue to keep the, the, the components, the lead paint, safe. You know, as long as it's intact, it's generally safe. When it becomes chipping and peeling, falls to the ground, falls to the window seals, gets tracked around the house, becomes dust, that's when we have our problems.
So every three years, you'll go back to that?
No, that, I mean, that's just what our, when we assist, we have a three-year agreement with them. We place a lien on the property. And it's an agreement with them that to stay in compliance with our agreement and to be in compliance with using these grant dollars, we have this three-year agreement with them. Now, at the end of that three-year agreement, it's completely forgivable. The lien, we release the lien.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, and is the community involved in any of the decision-making and implementation of lead-based paint hazard control efforts?
Other than our, I mean, we've got this referral system that's coming in from the Douglas County Health Department. Our program has been around for, this is our seventh grant that we're working on. Our first one was in ninety-nine, so we've been doing it for twenty-plus years. We have a pretty robust program. There's a lot of fence-talking out there. There's a lot of previous client, neighbor, family referrals. So there's a lot, we, we still don't, there's work that still needs to be done. We still need to get the word out. But as far as, you know, enrollment goes, there's, the word is out there, is pretty well on the street as far, if you will. When we are awarded this grant upfront, there is an environmental review of the area we designate as going to be our focus area. And that goes in and out for a public review, public comment. So there's that period, which is part of the regulations, that when we get a new grant, every time we have to do that, it's out there for public comment.
Okay. So now my questions are centered toward the selection of the provider. I have about six questions and, and obviously the ones, the individuals that were awarded is probably not here in the room. So perhaps.
Let me, excuse me just a second. When you say provider, do you mean like the client, the homeowner?
No.
Or the contractor?
For example, the contractor.
Oh, okay.
So, one question that I have is that for each of these contractors, what is their experience in lead-based paint hazard control and abatement? And can they, and can you provide examples of similar projects in which they successfully completed?
So this lead work is specialized work. We do go through a approval process. There is training, specialized training and state licenses that are needed. The firms have to be registered with the State of Nebraska as a firm, as a certified abatement firm. So there is some regulations and criteria in place for that. So we do have an approved bidders list that they go through, through, through a little bit of scrutiny to make sure that you've got the credentials, that you've got the experience to be on this list. The majority, I've got, I think, four contractors on this list now. They, one, well, half of them have been on the program for a long time. They have a lot of experience and with some time, I could, I can get you a list of their previous projects. But like I said, they are vetted. They have to have this training and we work with them on a regular basis. So they have the experience that is necessary to do this type of specialty work.
So is it safe to say, my takeaway from this conversation, that anyone that you would recommend would have all of the, they've already provided you with the experience and all of that and taking the training, got the federal requirements, state requirements? I can assume that otherwise they would not be coming before us?
Correct.
Okay. All right. What, what measures does these contractors have to ensure lead dust and debris, when they're doing the work, isn't being transferred to other property nearby?
Okay. So part of their training is exactly that, lead safe work practices. So they go through, a worker will go through a two-day training course. Supervisor will go through a four-day training, three or four-day training work course. There they do actual hands-on training where they're building containments. They're adorning the PPE and learning to wear the PPE or professional protective equipment properly, masks and gloves, things of that nature. There is, there are caution tape signage that's up on-site. We have an occupant protection plan that the contractors are required to submit that is given to the occupants or tenants of the property so they know exactly what's going to be going on as well. There's also some federal documents that the tenants and occupants will receive outside of that occupant protection plan that they have to read and sign, that they understand that there's lead work going to be going on here and the dangers of that, to stay out of the work zone, to further explain what's going to be going on here. And then it explains how the contractor is keeping that safe. We also do a clearance process. So once our work is all done, we will come in and do dust wipe samples to ensure that the work has been done properly, that no additional dust, dust hazards have been created. And so there's that process as well. We also have inspectors, our city staff, that are out there on a daily basis that stop and check in the project as well. So there's a really good relationship there, a team concept I like to foster with my staff and the contractor and the homeowner and tenant, if it's a rental property, that we're all in this together. We're all going to get this done safely. And we're going to protect the kids that are in the home.
So when I'm getting phone calls from residents nearby with projects like this is being done, I can ensure them that all the necessary precautions to protect the debris and the dust has been secured?
Yes. And if you've got anybody that has any concerns, I would like to talk to them as well.
So I could also recommend them to get in contact with you?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You bet.
Motion, motion to approve?
Well, I don't see any other lights. Is there a second? It's to approve agenda item thirty-eight. Is that correct?
That would be thirty-seven, thirty.
We already did thirty-seven.
I'm okay with all the ones that are related to the lead base.
I think they were all removed, so I think, can we vote on them group? We, we've already removed them, so they have to be voted on individually, correct? Yeah, we, so if you would like, I can do the public hearing on thirty-nine through three of them? Through forty-one?
Right.
Okay. But thirty-eight, we're going to have to vote on separately because we didn't do the public hearing on them.
Okay, that's fine.
All right. So there's a roll call, and this is for agenda item thirty-eight. Brinker did a second.
All right. Harding. Hug. Johnson.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley.
Aye.
Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Now we'll do the public hearing on agenda items thirty-nine, forty, and forty. Forty-one? Yep. Are there any proponents or opponents for agenda item thirty-nine, forty, or forty-one? Proponents or opponents, since it's consent, you can come up at your leisure at any.
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, six eight one three two. I'm basically opposed to number forty-one more than the others, but I have some questions. I guess this is probably federal law for lead abatement. lead abatement, probably more than anything else. But, of course, these agendas don't explain any of that to citizens that don't have the time to go home and research things. So, I'm basically saying, well, there looks to be a difference between homeowners and a business, because number 41 implies that it's LLC, which to me means that that's a business that's operating for profit. So, I wonder, why are they getting that much money to fix up their building, if that's what it is? But, most businesses don't live in it. Maybe he does. It doesn't say anything about that. A deferred payment loan, that's different than a grant. The homeowners, I guess, get the grant, so they don't have to pay anything. But, I do also question, you must have to move people out of the house while they do this abatement and back in later. So, what's the cost of that and who pays it? I think those things should be answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents or opponents for 39 through 41? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Councilman Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Council President. Steve, if you'd want to address some of those questions?
For the items 30, I know 38's been approved, but 38, 39, 40?
I think his questions were on 41, and kind of centered around-
Okay, the one thing I would say about relocation, though-
Okay, yeah, that's true.
The units in the letter could be sometimes subject to relocation as well. It, it's paid for by the grant funds. So, I just want to throw that.
Okay.
Related to number 41, it is not a business. That is a rental rehab program, so the owner is the LLC listed right there, and the unit has to be vacant, too, for them to be awarded our funds. So, there is no relocation expenses.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I see no further lights. Is there a motion? Okay, all second, roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug. Johnson.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley.
Aye.
Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 42 is today. Are there any proponents or opponents?
Madam President, members of the council, Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. This is an expansion of our ability to work with our specialized contractor at the Moda McLean Ice Arena. Ray Martin Company has been our longtime provider for this unique service that we provide, and our permafrost pump at the ice rink. This is an older facility, so we're doing all we can to ensure its stability as we create a plan to potentially replace the system in full at some point. But, this expansion covers that need now and our flexibility to move nimbly and quickly on anything else that might present itself here in the near future. I'm happy to answer any of the questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents or opponents for Agenda Item 42? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Councilwoman Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to get clarification on the funding source for this?
This is part of our operating expenses, an expansion of that, of which we have funded to cover. We have flexibility within our account to make a determination about paying a certain contractor more for something like unique service. So, already budgeted, just a flex from one account or essentially within the account to cover the expanded need in this specific case.
So, it'll be coming from the parks budget?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that all?
That's it.
Okay. You're, you're good? Okay. All right. I'm sorry, I was looking at Councilman Hug. His light was on, and now it's off. All right. I see no further lights. Is there a motion? Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Melton.
Yes.
Item 42 is approved, six to zero. Item 47, in ordinance loving a special tax and assessment for the Benson Business Improvement District, is amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
The public hearing on Agenda Item Number 47 is today. Are there... Oh, I'm sorry, ordinance, we already held the public hearing on Agenda Item 47. That was held on October 3rd. So, do we have a motion? Amendment of the whole? Second, roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 48.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Want to move it as amended? Second, roll call.
No, on Item 47? That was an amendment of the whole.
It was.
So, I went on. Yep. Yeah, you were right. Now, we're good.
Yay. Well, that's a first for now, because I've been wrong multiple times today.
Item 48, in ordinance loving a special tax and assessment for the Blackstone Business Improvement District, is amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
Public hearing on Agenda Item 48?
No.
What?
Public hearing was held last week.
That's what I was just going to say. Public hearing on Agenda Item 48 was held on October 3rd, but that's all right. I can use your language. So, is there a motion? All right. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 49, in ordinance loving a special tax and assessment for the Dundee Business Improvement District, is amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
All right. Public hearing on Agenda Item 49 was held on October 3rd of 2023. Is there a motion? Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 50, in ordinance loving a special tax and assessment for the Elkhorn Business Improvement District, is amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 50 was held on October 3rd of 2023. Do we have a motion? Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 51, in ordinance loving a special tax and assessment for the North 24th Street Business Improvement District, is amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 51 was held on October 3rd, 2023. Do we have a motion? Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 52, in ordinance loving a special tax and assessment for the South Omaha Business Improvement District, is amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 52 was held on October 3rd, 2023. Is there a motion? Second, roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 53, a resolution to approve the nomination of Offutt Drive as a commemorative street name on 39th Street from Davenport Street to its southern terminus.
The public hearing on Agenda Item 53 is today. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Councilman Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you. Is, is the applicant here who made for this, made this request? Were any members of the Offutt family? I see Mr. Bagley's light is on. After me, I'll, I'll let him go with his comments, but I'm going to make a motion delay over.
Councilman Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Madam President. I did reach out to the Jocelyn Neighborhood Association, and they spoke to their board, and they were in support of both Items 53 and 54 to proceed as proposed here today. So, I will be supporting these two items today. Thank you.
Is there a motion? I see no further lights. Is there a motion on 53? There was a layover. Is there a second? No. Okay. All right. No further lights. Is there a motion? No, on these, we have to do them individually. Roll call.
Harding. Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Melton.
No.
Motion passed, four to two.
Public hearing on Agenda Item 54 is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none. Are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Councilman Harding, you're recognized.
Is the applicant here who made the request for this commemorative street naming? Were any members of the Jocelyn family? Same, I have the same sentiments on this that I did on, on the, the one prior. I think these are, these are great families that have contributed a lot to the history of Omaha and, and deserving of something like this. But, if we're going to make these kind of applications, and whoever made the application, I think, should be here to give us a little bit of the history of that and invite family members who, there are still, there's still many of the Offutt family, I'm sure, who would have been proud to be here had they known this was on here. And maybe the same for the Jocelyn or any of the Jocelyn family descendants. So, again, I, I think if, if someone's going to make the application for something like this, they should be proud enough to be down here to be in support of it, because these families have meant a lot to Omaha and contributed to our history. And we should be singing those praises and not just making a motion and passing without knowing anything about what the family's contributions were or why the application has been made. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilwoman Johnson, you're recognized.
Yes. I have a question. Councilmember Harding, I respect your concerns. One question would be, has, have you shared your concerns about someone being present in such a situation as street renaming before, to this body? Your concern about someone being present for such a glorious event, such as street renaming, your concern about them not being here present during the meeting, and we're making this vote today?
Actually, yes, I have, both at meetings like this. As a matter of fact, when now Councilmember Hug came before us for a commemorative, I believe it was either a street, I think it was a street naming. It was... Fred Astaire Day, sorry. But, that's an example of, we, we wanted to make sure that we knew what, he made the, was standing up in, in support of it. We knew about it. I did reach out to a member of the Offutt family who had no idea that this was going to be on here. So, yes, I have. And I'm concerned about the number of commemorative street namings that we have, especially when the applicant's not even here to make the, the case for why we're doing this. If we're going to be doing these things, and they mean something to someone, I think they should be here in support of that.
This is the first time this has been brought to my attention that you have this concern. Perhaps you had those conversations with other members of the council. However, this is the first time I've heard it. But, now that I have that information regarding your concern, I will take that into consideration going forward. But, this is the first time I've heard that.
All right. Well, Councilwoman Johnson, are you finished?
Yep.
Okay. Councilman Harding, Councilman Bagley has his light on, and then I'll go back to you.
Go ahead, that's, I'll wait.
Okay. All right. Councilman Harding, you're recognized.
I'll, I'll refrain.
Okay. Councilman Bagley, you're recognized.
Madam Vice, Madam President, as I said on 53, I did reach out to Jim Winston, the Neighborhood Association, and Jocelyn, and I, I wanted to be certain that they supported this, and when their board was in support of it, and that's why today I am supporting this. But, I have had conversations with staff and colleagues on making sure we get these right, because I know I've had a couple in the past in my district that streets have been renamed, and I spoke to the neighborhood associations, and everything was good. And then, after the sign got put up, I got a lot of blowback. So, I can appreciate people's being cognizant, people being cognizant of all the different things that go into street renaming's. And in this one in particular, though, I am supporting it for the reasons I mentioned today. Thanks, Madam President.
Thank you. I see no, oh, Councilman Harding? No? Okay. See no further lights. So, I just have a couple comments. It just seems to me that we, I've, I've never done so many street namings as I've done in the first 10 years as I've done in the last year. So, I'm, I'm just wondering, you know, we could get to a point where we were just renaming every, every street in the city. I want to really make sure that the people, the families, first of all, it's just astonishing that no one in the Offutt family even knew that this is happening. So, I think that, number one, they should be notified, at least. And if I could, Mr. Fanslaw, maybe you could share some information with me about street naming?
Sure. So, just to be clear, it's, first of all, Dave Fanslaw, City Planning, it's, these are commemorative street namings, not renaming. So, there's a difference, and there's, there's different code for each. Number-wise, you are correct. Your recollection of how many you've processed in the last few years, you're correct. Between 2018 and 2020, we processed eight applications. In the last three years, from 21 to, well, October of '23, we've processed 37. So, we have seen quite the increase in these requests. Staff did reach out to both families, and they were aware that the application had been made.
Were they supportive of it, did you ask?
They were supportive.
Okay. Well, I think that's important to know. I just think that we're just kind of willy-nilly renaming streets. I'm not sure for, for what reason, just anybody that we like, we, you know, we just don't want to rename the street. These are two families that have contributed a lot to Omaha and I think are well-deserving. And really, what I would, wanted to do was lay over 53 and 54, so that, give the family an opportunity to come down and, and be here for the, for the renaming. So, I guess, I mean, Councilman Bagley, I'll, I'll give the vote, but I think these should be a bigger deal, and we shouldn't be doing this if the, at least the family members, you know.
Yeah, well...
Somebody's not, at least somebody, at least the applicant who wants it wouldn't be here.
Yeah. Well, based on the numbers I just presented to you, we're spending a lot of staff time on this as well. There's an application process. There's a review by city staff in my department. I sign off on them. And then, and there's a few that we haven't. And then, it's, as you know, it's passed on to the council members who district it falls in for them to sign off on. So, there's a process set forth in code that we follow. Most of them get our recommendation for approval. There are a few that haven't recently, but we'll continue to coordinate and to take a look at that code. Maybe it needs to be changed. Maybe we need to have that conversation, but that's probably for another day.
Maybe that, maybe that can be something done in the planning committee.
I'll put it on the agenda tomorrow.
All right. Thank you. I have nothing further. I closed public hearing already. I asked for proponents and opponents and closed public hearing. I closed public hearing. Okay. Well, good thing you can hear me. So, at this point, I'm looking for, does anyone have a motion? Roll call.
Harding. Hug. Johnson.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Melton.
No.
Motion passed, four to two. Item 55, an ordinance to acquire private property for the Benson Vale Acres Street Improvement Phase One Project.
Public hearing on Agenda Item 55 is today. Public hearing on Agenda Item 55 is today. Are there any proponents? Are there, seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed.
Item 56, an ordinance to approve an agreement with Lexus Nexus for Police Services.
Public hearing on Agenda Item 56 is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, 68132. One reason I always get up to oppose things whether or not is because then we can get some discussion, but I'd like to know what kind of citizen reporting we're talking about. I didn't have time to read every item on your online, see the attachment things before I came today, and I don't think many citizens do. I'm opposed to any online system that'll allow me to call in and report on a neighborhood. If that's a 911 call, fine. If it's the mayor's hotline, you should say so in the, in these things, so that when a citizen does come down here, maybe between breaks at work, he knows what you're talking about. That sounds pretty ominous to me, online citizen reporting system. Please explain it. And by the way, this is about the 20th time where I can hear some of you very plainly, can't hear him usually, and usually Fester, but I can hear you today. Juanita, I have a problem hearing you sometimes. So it's either the microphone is bad, the operator is not doing his job, or you people are not speaking into your microphone.
Okay, well, if you don't have any more on...
Can we have some remedial training on it, please?
Okay, well, you can hear me, so, thank you. Are there any other proponents or opponents? Seeing none?
Item 57, an ordinance to approve a three-year agreement with the Nebraska Humane Society for Animal Control Services.
The public hearing on Agenda Item 57 is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed.
Item 58, an ordinance to approve an agreement with Bibliocommons Corporation for Library Services.
Public hearing on Agenda Item 58 is today. Are there any proponents?
Yes. I'm here today, my name is Rachel Steiner, I'm the Assistant Library Director, address 3020 84th Street, 68124. I'm here today to answer any questions you might have about this. It is a new ordinance for us, as it is a three-year contract instead of our normal one-year.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed.
Item 59, an ordinance to amend Section 30-263 of the Omaha Municipal Code regarding application procedure for fireworks sales permit.
Public hearing on Agenda Item 59 is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed.
Non-action items, items 60 through 87 do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing under vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Second, roll call.
Harding. Hug. Johnson. Rowe. Bagley. Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero, meeting is adjourned at 3:53.